All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded, just so everybody knows. Uh, it's six P M. Uh, roll call, Marquettie's here, Councilor Steves.
Here.
Councilor Dow.
Yeah.
Kevin Splain.
Yeah.
Steve Lozlo. Is.
No idea.
All right. Consider an approved joint DPW Town Council meeting minutes of November seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Motion.
Do you have a chance to look at them?
I do.
Did you get a chance to look at the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Anything stand up?
There's a couple of my ex-colleagues, but I'm not excited.
All right. All those in favor? Uh, Jada, item number four, citizens forum. Go ahead, Kevin.
We had a few things I just wanted to bring up. Um, I was wondering if we can get a status as far as South Street goes. Actually, a lot of my things have to do with town projects going on with the winter coming. We experienced it last night with snow. Is South Street done? Because every time I travel that road, there's barrels and cones all over the place.
They said they'll leave in the barrels there because those are the known areas of issues at this moment, and, um, they did over a hundred ton, they said they did down there on that Friday that I I spoke to you about before that, um. And they said that, uh, every time they go, it's like a twenty thousand dollar addition to keep bringing it up. Um, I drove down it today. We're gonna do some patching when you're coming in from Sturbridge. Right before, I mean, JSL closes on, uh, Friday, so we're gonna try to get accomplished tomorrow and Friday. They kind of fill in some of those bad areas over there that's not on their sale list. And anything else that's down there, I gotta see if we can kind of smooth it out a little bit more.
So, Michael, how do you feel going into winter with barrels and cones all over that road?
I'm not, I'm not opposed to not having them there, but I don't like having them there put that way. Just for the simple fact that it'd be good for the plow driver to know that this is a known issue area when he's going down there until they cover it and you can't see them anymore. But, um, I spoke long with, um, Alex from Tianbon about that yesterday. And he says if there's more complaints and more issues, then he will let them know as soon as possible so that way we can turn around and get it resolved before and before. I know we were out there last night, salted and everything of that sort, so, um, a couple guys did mention how bumpy and painful it is that we're down that road, so.
Yeah, I'm just afraid the town's equipment's gonna take a beating on that road. I mean, that, everybody complained, had been complaining about it. So my other one is, is this West Street project. Can somebody explain? I still don't agree with not putting asphalt in those trenches at the end of the night. I, I still, I'm gonna complain about that forever. But, uh, can somebody explain why we removed the sidewalk in front of that school?
We had repaired.
When school is in session?
The sewer lateral had to be repaired.
So is that sidewalk gonna be, like?
Yes.
Prepared?
Yep.
Properly?
Now, although Phil gets done this shit, I probably just put hot mix in there for the time being, but it will be repaired to a concrete, yes.
Now, do we know when we're shutting down construction as far as?
They said December first.
Okay. And then usually by this time, and I don't know what we've gotten, a list of plow contractors, and is that coming forward soon, or do we know what's going on with that? We haven't, we haven't seen anything, and with last night's snow, it kind of, it's that time of year.
So, uh, I worked on this with, uh, Mr. Jackson, who's our interim. He came in and we checked with our insurance company to see if we could change any insurance requirements. Um, you know, they advised that we should keep them what they are. Uh, he went out, made some tweaks the other day, and he's, my understanding, we posted up the application if anybody wants to come in. Um, and he sent it out to some individuals.
Okay. And then my last thing, is there a possibility, Phil, I know you spoke with the guy or the company for the five K Street sidewalk, and they said before winter, can we possibly get a time definite?
Yes.
Due to the fact, I mean, it, it, this truck's parking on that sidewalk all day, and somebody's gonna seriously get hurt walking around those trucks to walk in that sidewalk, and.
I will call him tomorrow.
I mean, winter is upon us.
Was that located at Keith and Paul's?
That, that's, when you go in, I know. When you go to the new, uh, housing.
K Street.
K Street.
Oh, K Street, okay.
So if you start from the entryway going in and come back, say, towards Thomas's, they destroyed that whole entire sidewalk. I mean, there's, there's some holes like this in that sidewalk.
I just wanted to make sure, and where was that? I'll, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, I've seen, you know, someone trip there, now we got, they're, they're parking large vehicles, unloading furniture, appliances, contractors, trucks around us, and now people are walking in that road right there. And it's, that was my thing. And then the only other thing is, uh, the road plates in town. Do we have some sort of regulation against them as far as how long they, in the season, being wintertime coming up? I mean, those road plates were slick last night.
I'll have to look into, I don't know.
That, that's the biggest thing. I mean, I don't know if anybody's, was out last night when we got that dust and the snow, but those plates, when they got that snow on there, yeah. But they got slick. And I know we had an issue with one that fell in Saturday night.
I guess the whole trench collapsed on that one, is my understanding of that one.
Thank you.
Yeah, well said. Okay, I'm gonna go with, uh, Adams, did you have something?
Yeah, I did. I, I had a question, 'cause, um, Kevin and I brought up some good points the other day. You know, we're in, in town manager about, um, engineers, hiring engineer company and stuff like that, and reevaluating the DPW director, the, the, the assistant and all that kind of stuff. I know Councilor Lozlo had brought up, and I agreed with him, taking a look at that assistant to the engineer, um, and how we wanna maybe tweak that a little bit. I, I understand there's a road, um, heavy, but we also have facilities heavy and make a well-rounded individual that, that may be brought in. Um, I know we talked about, or asked, uh, the DPW subcommittee to take a look at that again, and I don't know where that's at, I'm just asking the chair for that.
I don't know where that's at. We were trying to change it to a more of a road construction oversight person, and we're waiting for a DPW director to be on board before we go further with it. That's where it stands right now. Is that correct, Mr. Town Manager?
Yes. My goal is still trying to find somebody before the end of the year.
All right.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay. Councilor Lozlo?
Question on the insurance, TM. What's the liability limit now, with it, two or three million?
Two.
Two, right? And I know the insurance company advises town they go up to two million, and that's when you wiped out all the little plow guys.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm in business, I have to carry it, and anybody that's in business has to carry that limit to do any work. The thing that kills me is if we look back at the town of Southbridge for the last fifty years, the accidents that anybody had to go to liability insurance, what was the maximum problem they had? And I can't come up with anything even to shed a million, never mind, it, you know, there was a lot of, you know, maybe it scraped car or something like that into small potatoes on the insurance. It would never anything where it would justify saying go to two million outside of an insurance company, wanna make money by selling it to the town by saying, this is what you should have. Great, I'd love to sell them, you know, concrete, well, this is what you should have, you should have one-foot sidewalks instead of six-inch. Uh, but the, the municipal rule of four to five inches is, is, is the step. So to me, I'm not sure I wanna listen to our insurance company, that's what I'm trying to say, because by them upping it to two million, I remember how many.
About fifteen.
DPW had a lot of independents driving truck that had liability insurance, they had insurance on their trucks, they were fined until they jacked the insurance when they, it's not worth a, a single, uh, truck independent to, to even come help the town of Southbridge. All the other towns, they still have independents, I don't know what they have for insurance, but I, I would seriously think about bringing that down where independents can, you know, it can be cost-effective for them to plow for the town.
Is that something that we can, uh, we have to?
Something to look into, that's all.
Vote on, or something that can just be a policy change, or?
When I came, if I may, when I came here, that was essentially the policy that was going on at DPW. Um, I don't think we pay for the insurance, they have, the contractors have to show that they carry that insurance, so it's not a cost to us. I think the insurance company, when I asked them what would they recommend, they recommend that they continue to have that so that we're not exposed to any liability. I talked to Mr. Harding, there are some other towns that use your standard one hundred, three hundred thousand policy that your average, maybe independent person has. If they were working for us and they had something and it was over three hundred thousand, they may then come back to us. So I think that's, the, the position of the insurance company is that, you know.
But, TM, my, my problem with it is, we never had one near a hundred thousand liability, ever. So why would I turn around and over insure myself just in case someone goes over three hundred thousand? I mean, for as long as I've been alive, it was hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, even for the sewer opening liability, never did I see anything happen that even exceeded anywhere near. Never mind, I can't pick up one problem that ever had to go back to the liability insurance.
So I, I think it's, it's a balancing of the risk. You know, as I said, that was the policy in place when I got here, whether we written or unwritten. Um, I just reached out to the insurance company, you know, if people are comfortable with going that way, you know, I, I tend to be a little bit conservative on these things, I don't wanna expose us to any liability, but if, if people feel the risk is minimal, you know, that we, they don't foresee that, you know, we could look at something different. Um, it also comes down to whether or not we can get enough people. Um, I had just met with Mr. Jackson, uh, not fifteen minutes ago. I can contact him tomorrow, I mean, he, well, he was in Sturbridge, I think he maintained the, the one hundred, three hundred, so I mean, if we.
And, and the thing is, the minute we raised it, okay, Heather was the DPW director, it's no, nothing on her, it was an insurance decision. She lost a ton of plows.
Yeah.
And then after it fell all on the DPW, and then everybody kicking the DPW like, how come you aren't doing your job? Wait a minute, this was an administrative decision that created the fallout at the ground, where boots are on the ground. So for myself, I say go back to a hundred and three, three hundred thousand, instead of, you know, piling it on to the company.
Well, we could take, uh, ask the town manager to take a look at it. Now, Councilor Adams, before I go to you.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Shenier had his hand up, so can I go to him first?
Just a couple of things, on the insurance, I understand it right, it's a recommendation from the insurance. What happens if we don't go along with the insurance recommendation? Nothing. So I, I, I just can't see why we, just because they say to go at two million dollars, it's a recommendation. There've been plenty of recommendations that came through town altogether that was never followed. So I, I would suggest that we go look at lowering that, where I believe at one time it was even a million dollars.
It was a hundred, three hundred thousand liability.
Right, but I think one time, right?
I think one time it wasn't.
We were at a million dollars, but when they jumped, when they jumped to that two million dollars, the little guy on the street there, it took like a half a dozen plowing days just to recoup that.
Five thousand.
Just to, just to recoup that money, increase, so that's, that's a big part of the other thing.
Sure.
The other thing that concerns me down at the Caseville Street is, uh, over the summer they took out about forty feet of fencing that is a good drop on that sidewalk, and with winter coming, I believe that the American Association should put some kind of barrier there instead of plastic tape. Uh, so, you know, I, I would respectfully ask that the, uh, town looking to do something there for, you know, to, uh, put the fence back up. I'm sure they're waiting for the two million dollars that they wanted to put in new rod eye and fence, but, hey.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Adams?
Thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, just to caveat what Councilor Lozlo has stated, I called an insurance company myself and had a conversation, they recommended it to the two million. But that being said, just what Mr. Shenier said, they're gonna have to plow all season long to make up for what they're paying on the two million, so even if it's a million or we start dropping, I, I highly recommend that we do that, so we bring some more people in. I will, as far as that fence is concerned, I can run through that damn fence myself and, and take that thing out. I don't know what, uh, that little fence will do for it, but I.
Not so much for the cars, but people walking down the street with this snow and ice coming, that's the only thing that I'm saying.
Well, it's, maybe it's something we need to get the health department.
Especially if you leave a, an establishment some night and walk him down.
That's your own. That's your own damn fault.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Dow, did you want to say something? All right. Okay, if there's nothing else.
No, on this matter.
Oh, go ahead.
So I just wanna pull up in my conversation with the insurance company, just, um, I think we, we asked for a, a one million dollar auto liability and a five hundred thousand property damage, where most people have a one hundred, three hundred for their auto and a one hundred what, um, for property damage. And what the insurance company said to us, you know, it really comes down to, as I said, balancing the risk and what we wanna take on, and that, um, the problem is, if somebody has a personal policy, they usually can't produce a certificate of insurance or put us on there, which you would with a commercial. So that's one thing. But they said if we wanted to do that, maybe what we make as a requirement is, they have to allow us to run their driving record or produce a safe driver history so that we can evaluate them, or if we have personal knowledge of their past performance, um, that that'd be a mitigating factor as to whether they come on or not, because they're, they're quote not mine, is that somebody just doesn't drive well at work, they drive well on their own time. So if, if all they have is their personal insurance, you'd have a good idea of how they drive all the time and what they would like to do. So if we wanted to lower down to contractors we dealt with in the past that are individual, say, you know, somebody owns just their own landscaping, they have one truck, one plow, we would ask them to produce a driver's history or let, say, the chief of police run their motor vehicle record to see, you know, what their history is, if they had accidents or just where they go.
So you have a good idea.
But, TM, my, my problem is, for fifty years, we've never had a problem with anybody coming back and the town liability being at, at, at the, the lower rate. So for what I'm saying is, the odds are, you're betting something, when you buy insurance, you're betting it's gonna happen, but the track record in Southbridge and surrounding towns, five hundred thousand dollars, what do you have to do, knock down a house with a four-wheel drive truck? You know what I'm saying? I mean, five hundred thousand dollars, think about it, MI two million. A five hundred thousand dollars, I mean, you'd have to run into a house and burn it down or something.
I, I don't.
I mean, a big house.
I don't know the history behind how it got changed to begin with.
No, I know, but I'm just bringing back some common sense to the insurance industry, that's all. I don't wanna, uh, I mean, we're, we're, we're papering ourselves to death. Just to be real, a liquor license, you go to one town, it's three pieces of paper. When I do it, I gotta write three blueprints, fourteen of these, five of these.
All right.
I'm like, I, I do it, but I say, why are we making it so difficult to do things?
All right, well, if we could revisit.
And this is another one of the examples, the insurance pandemic.
Councilor Dow, did you wanna say something?
Yes, definitely.
All right.
They're subcontractor, that's not our job to check their record, they're, that's why they have insurance, why we have to, uh, check their driver record, as well the license is valid, not expired or suspended, that's not our job to see if he have an accident or he have a ticket or, who's gonna work plowing snow in the cold? Lawyer or town manager? The guy is on the street, why?
How do you know?
No, I'm just saying, uh, no, it's, it's, that's not, that's why they're subcontractor.
My shuttle drivers are Starbucks.
But that's, they're private contractor, they get their own company, that's their own insurance check on them, not us. Our job to make sure they have a valid license if you wanna check, but that's not to check the record of their, uh, history.
If we don't wanna spend all, require such high insurance. Just, just if we just take, you know, them at their word, just trust but verify, is his office.
Because, you know, like, again, the company's gonna hire people to plow for them. It's not gonna be the guy, they got your order, so it's gonna make it difficult on the, on the, on the honor of the company to hire people too.
No, this is just for us doing individuals. A commercial contractor's already gonna have that type of policy. It's just if we're hiring somebody that, you know, let's say Mr. Shenier wants to plow for us and do parking lots, and he has a pickup truck and a plow. He's not gonna wanna carry that commercial insurance for the reasons he already said. So I might say, all right, I'll take him at his word and I'll use his personal insurance, but I'd just like to know, are you a good driver?
I agree with you regarding five hundred, one million, and they get their own, and you know, they have something not to lay down back on a town, but checking record and.
I, I wouldn't be doing it for all the, the commercial, this is just for anybody who's on a personal policy. It's just a suggestion, if we wanted, if we wanted to not have the high insurance requirements for the, uh, individuals, just to have some peace of mind that we weren't taken away.
See, our biggest problem is we have nobody assisting at DPW.
The, the thing is, well, everything you're gonna do right now, regardless, only plowing, if you wanna pull a permit, you wanna, uh, business, whatever, it's one million, standard, it's a standard, why the, to plow, you need two million? I mean, I agree on.
It's not two, it's one.
So two million?
It's one, two.
That's not what I got when it come, all right.
Oh, okay.
No, right now, right now, they require two million dollars.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I can't.
Yeah. It's one million, two million.
Two million, yeah, right now.
If it's a top program, you need a two million.
They increase it, I'm saying, yeah, I mean, I, that's what I'm saying, everything else is one million, why that is gonna be two million, what's the, you know, the point that Mr. Lozlo say? But, uh, Charlton Street, where that two family built, the, the open, the street there is like two inches lips when you drive, I don't know if that's something.
We took care of it.
You did?
Yes. And I got a call about four thirty in the morning about that one, and, uh, yeah, I got right in touch with the.
Okay. When you drive out town through Dudley, uh, Deer Run, it's like a road the town took over recently, the lights on light, uh, did the town?
The, the white tail circle?
I think so, yeah.
Is that his Ridge area?
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's a light, the town on those streetlights, it's some, uh, you know, where's, where the skip and light or connection, it, the boxes is open.
The box is open?
You know, wanna go there, some kids playing there, you know, catch the wire or something, you know?
So that's on, that's on the Red Fox Boulevard?
I see that.
Part of that area, it's, I think. Yeah, but didn't open any boxes, we just.
I think where you connect the light to light, pole to pole. It's a, it's not only one, it's, it's, it's different.
Well, those are, 'cause they, they never put poles there, yeah?
So it, it's open, so I just wanna make sure nobody.
They used to have national grid boxes on top of them that were locked.
Yeah, you see, like, you can see that, uh, the thing with sticking out, you know, that's another one.
It's open.
It's a few, it's not all the.
That's definitely Hunter's Ridge.
It's Hunter's Ridge, yeah. It's a, it's a bunch of.
They all had national grid boxes on them at one time.
Yeah, they're like four, five of them open.
All on them?
Yeah. It's something just for, for the town, you know, like, we don't wanna kick play there, catch the wire and get zip and.
Okay. So we're gonna move on then. Uh, agenda item number five, review discuss the town manager's appointment of Chris Armstrong as DPW maintenance man, equipment operator for indefinite term, active immediately pending the successful completion of pre-employment, physical and background screening and state ethics, entertain a motion.
Motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, um, he was one of our candidates that we had in our last round prior, and he ended up going to, um, Webster, um, DPW there, and he wanted to work here with us, so once we reached back out to him and asked if he wanted to come back for an interview, he greatly jumped to it, and he has a CDL, he's working on his hoist and licenses, and uh, very eager to work for the town, he worked, he lives in town also.
All right, any questions? Mr. Splain?
Phil, when's the soonest time he can stop? I know it's gotta go upstairs, I don't know when it, Monday?
Um, yeah, he, Monday is when the council meeting is, and I still believe he's gonna wait to make sure he goes through before he does two weeks, so he.
Okay.
But, uh, he did come in, I think today, was it, to fill out all his paperwork and get everything all squared away, so. I think he, I can probably call him tonight, and if it goes through good and have no issues, he'd probably be more than willing to stack liquor.
All right. Mr. Adam, Councilor Adams?
Yeah, just real quick, just to the town manager, Mr. Chair, the, we have these applicants, they fill out application form. I, I think it's, it's smart of us to make sure that every package is kind of the same when we receive it. So one thing I noticed, great resume, all that kind of stuff, I believe everything I got to fill, but one of those things I take a look at, I really take a look at that application, especially where that part is, um, you know, if there's a gap in employment and why, I mean, it doesn't mean it's gonna stop, but maybe there was a gap, but I'd like to be able to see if, if, if police have to do it, fire have to do it, I think DPW has, any applicant that applies should be the same across the board. That's all I have, thank you.
We're gonna get his resume.
Mr. Lozlo?
Can you clear it off?
Yes.
Councilor.
Let me see those.
Oh, thank you, I didn't know you backed the plowers.
It's okay.
My only, my only question is, um, I know I looked in the budget and we, we had two open positions for maintenance man and, uh, equipment operator, and then we created one, so that's three, and this will make four, now, did somebody leave or something?
Yes.
So somebody left?
We had someone that left, yes.
So we've hired three, Nicola, Proventure, and Doros, and now we're hiring this guy.
Yes, there was one, there was two before we had to come to the meeting that were with us that left. So every time we fill that open position that you gave us, we've lost somebody.
All right. Okay, any other questions? None? All those in favor? Jada, item number six, review discuss approval to award for the Kohasi pump upgrade project and Dantris, Dankris Builders Incorporated, project to be funded from water project account number six, three, seven, one, oh, FY sixteen, Kohasi water pump replacement. Entertain a motion to recommend to council for approval with Dankris Builders for two hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred, and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager or Phil?
That falls on Steve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, uh, as you know, earlier in the year, we came to the council for, um, approval of the engineering and design to rebuild this station. Uh, this is our main transfer station, move water from the Kohasi reservoir, uh, over the hill, East River Road, and into the main reservoir system. We put out the bid, we got, um, five really competitive bids, one guy was a little bit high. Tianbon has worked with this firm before and, uh, came highly recommended to us with, uh, good work history.
Okay, any questions? Anyone? No? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Jada, item number seven, review discuss transfer request for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. I'm going to say that that's what it is. Uh, there's a little typo here on that one. Fund number zero, eight, four, five, water stabilization project number six, three, seven, one, zero, FY sixteen, Kohasi water pump replacement to fund the Kohasi water pump replacement project, entertain a motion to recommend to council.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager or?
Oh, sure, uh, so when we originally put money into this fund, um, from retained earnings, it was, uh, arbitrarily, we took a guess at the hundred and twenty-five thousand original budget, um, after engineering and advertisement for bids and all the related ancillary funds, we were left with in the ninety thousand dollar range, I wanna say ninety-six thousand um, we were left with in the ninety thousand dollar range, I wanna say ninety-six thousand dollars in budget in that account. And, uh, this represents the balance we need to transfer into that project to, uh, pay the Dankris contract.
All right. Any questions?
Nope.
I do have one question, um, I was looking at our capital project funds balances, and we have at least five projects here that were all done in FY sixteen. Uh, fire hydrant valve replacement has twenty-five thousand dollars left. Laurel West Main Street has five hundred thousand dollars. The Kohasi water pump replacement had a hundred and twenty-five before tonight. The reservoir spillway brush removal has forty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight, and the South Street Waterman Design had a hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-four. This was as of six thirty, twenty twenty-two. So my only question is, why couldn't we use some of these funds, clean them out, and use them for something like this rather than transfer money out of-
So some of those are currently in play, uh, like the South Street project, the, the Lower Main Street is the, uh, each main project that's gonna be in the, in the Woodstock Road area. Um, spillway and brush and gate valves are actually in, in progress. We've worked on those, we've worked out of those funds every year. Uh, when they're diminished to nothing, we won't, we replenish them, we'll work within our regular operating budget. Um, that leaves this project and was there one more in the cover?
Fire hydrant valve-
That's fire hydrants and valves is something we work out of every year.
Okay.
So, uh-
So this, this was set aside in FY sixteen, and now we're, what, six years later?
Yeah, so this particular project, uh, DEP brought this up to our attention. And our inspector from DEP at the time had said they wanted us to redesign that entire Kohasi station, expand it, and put in redundant pumps. Uh, I pleaded with them that it wasn't, wasn't operationally necessary, because this is simply a transfer station we use a couple times a year, maybe if there's a drought. Um, DEP was kinda taking a hard line on it, they didn't make a directive, but they were kinda pushing us on it. Um, when that inspector retired, we went with a different inspector at DEP that was assigned to us. Um, they were much more logical, they approached operations. This was in the nineteen-ish timeframe, nineteen, two thousand and twenty. Um, and she rescinded that, uh, it wasn't an order, but a suggestion, um, which allowed us to go with the single pump method, and then once the station was refilled, maybe, maybe procure a spare motor. Um, COVID hit at that time and, you know, we were happy to keep operations going with staffing. But now that we're, the world is reemerging, here we are, you know, after the fact, and, uh, we're able to proceed forward with a single pump setup. It's taken much longer than I anticipated, but, uh, I'm glad to get this project on and get off of books, because I do know that's a sensitive subject with the councils to get some of these old accounts either used or cleaned up.
Right. Okay. Anything else? All those in favor? Thank you, motion passes.
Oh, I do have one quick question at the manager. So this being a stabilization, uh, we will have to do two-thirds majority, right?
I believe so.
Because it's a stabilization.
Which I think we're gonna load up.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number eight, review discuss transfer requests for four thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars, five cents from number zero, zero, one, four, nine, nine, dash, five, one, one, zero, zero, zero salaries to number zero, zero, one, four, nine, nine, dash, five, one, eight, three, zero, zero. License stipends to pay additional stipends per union contract. Entertain a motion to recommend the council approve such transfer.
Motion.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
As you know, we, uh, ratified the DPW contract this summer, and they were working through some of the numbers the other day and realized that they were short, um, to pay under the contract for part of the retro and other monies owed. So they're asking for this just so they can make the, uh, the individuals whole.
All right. Any questions? None? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. Agenda item number nine, review discuss the Department of Public Works request to declare as surplus the following items as an entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval. Nine-foot universal utility body, front bumper for nineties Ford, two, two nine-foot Dura-Liners, and a seventy-inch toolbox.
Seven.
Ten.
Go ahead, Phil.
Just trying to clean house and get rid of stuff that we don't need anymore and that's pretty much all I have to say about it. This stuff has been laying around for years and years, and just wanna get rid of it.
All right. Any questions?
I will say these parts do sell, when my last position I was in charge of this. And when we would take off regular, if we buy like an F two fifty, we'd take off the bed or other parts when we put on things, people buy them. You know, because generally they're in excellent condition a lot of times. Uh, when you take them off, beds and different things, now this is a, the truck body with the cabinets. But, um, that may have some-
That size is gonna happen.
A lot of them, if they're not used, or if they were taken off, they're a bit shit. And they get good money, so.
If you look at the pictures, you'll see the stuff that the mountain kits, they're just all the boxes.
And they did that.
All right, Councilor Adams?
Thank you for being honest. I think this is one of many years these stuff never came in.
I got more, I agree.
I know, but like usually, usually either technically, oh, nobody bring them up, you go, you know what I mean? Uh, did that have to go in an auction as well?
Yeah, we would, we would have to advertise it and make sure we're getting money for it. Thank you.
All right.
Kevin, how come we don't do the auctions ourselves? I know in the past we have at the DPW, at the cotton compound. Especially what Phil's saying, he's got more stuff coming down the line. Can't we just box it up and make one big auction?
Depends upon, you know, you know, kinda like we talked about the other thing. It's, if you wanna get exposure to a wider audience, sometimes it's, it's publication. You know, you, there are people that surf those public auction websites on a regular basis, so you get a, people are always booking. If we can only publish it on our website and maybe a local newspaper, you may not get a wider audience, you might not get the, you know, and some of those are live auctions and they run like noon, so it's an automatic auction here. If you bid, somebody else can bid.
Go ahead.
They have an online auction for the, like, dual street signs, they piled them. And I know that I bid on, uh, there was some antique dealers that really got involved in it, and I paid a lot of money for those signs, but I wanted these two particular signs, they go up in salvage. And that's why, like, on PPP, we have the, uh, Willie, the little Jeep. We have a brush truck. I mean, I think they still have value, and I think that there are salvage residents that would like to buy some of the salvage, you know, fire apparatus. So I think you're gonna see, if you went on an online auction like they did the signs, they kept saying what the number was, but didn't say who was bidding. And they kept giving the top number and they just kept going up and up and up.
And they don't, they don't say, they have a batch number or whatever sign.
Okay, uh, Councilor Adams?
Mr. Chair, this is kinda off, well, it's the same thing, but a little off topic. The sewer plant, did we ever get rid of that ranger?
No, it's still down there.
Yeah, it's growing weeds through the tree, I think, too.
Do you want a picture of that?
I got a picture of it, and I, you know, 'cause I have nothing else better to do, besides go down sewer.
I need a lawn on it.
All right, that's all I got.
How come we're not selling it?
That's the sewer plant, I mean, I can, I can get that. But it's, it's, it's got trees and stuff thrown through it right now, but, um, that was before my time over there.
Anything else, all those in favor?
But thanks for reminding me.
No problem at all.
I'll add that on there, that'll be a plus. Thanks.
Okay, agenda item number ten, discuss road improvement projects, Ellis Road, North Street, Mechanic Street, and sidewalks. I actually, I asked to put this on here because I wanted an update. I thought that North Street and Mechanic Street were gonna be worked on before the snowfall, uh, flies and apparently it's too late for that. I'm not sure, and Ellis Road, I know there's a problem with that, and also we wanted to know, uh, about our sidewalk ones. I know that Kevin, Kevin wanted to ask about sidewalks, but. So just start off with Ellis Road, I mean, uh, North Street and Mechanic Street. Are those going to be, anything gonna be done with those or?
I have not talked to Mr. Jackson about, or Mr. Pioppi about those two. This week I was trying to look at, um, Ellis Road. So when, for those who aren't aware, what happened, the question came up. Um, when Mr. Jackson first came in, we met with Mr. Pioppi, you go over a few things. And a question came up about, uh, Ellis Road, because there's two sides to Ellis Road. The north side, Gulfwood, and the south side. And-
Sorry?
It was brought to my intention on more than one occasion that the south side is a, a private road. It's an unaccepted way. And there was some question as to what type of work, because I have an email from Ms. Blakely that said we were gonna do four hundred thousand dollars of work on the north side. And then I had something from Mr. DeJardine at one point, a memo saying that we should either consider just paving, uh, Ellis Road as is or restoring it to a gravel road. And then Mr. Pioppi, the bid, I went back and since what the bid just said for the paving management, Ellis Road, it didn't qualify whether it was north or south. And Mr. Pioppi was asking about, well, if we were gonna do the south side, it's gonna need drainage, we should widen it, because it's only fourteen feet at certain points. And I just, just decided to go back and look at this, and I have pulled up the nineteen eighty-six agreement that's out there with the residents. And that actually says to keep it as a unimproved country road and only a gravel road. So I'm trying to find out, I was supposed to have a call today, I just got an email from the attorney that said he's sorry that he couldn't meet with me to discuss this various, there's a whole file on Ellis Road. And it's about as clear as mud as to what, where obligations are on that south side.
All right, I'm gonna let-
Again, this, this, this thing been going on for a hundred years. Town Manager Howley, it was a gravel base road. And the only reason why the original agreement dated is because there were a handful of people on Ellis Road. The Kadrakis, and they took the town to court and told them it's a town-accepted road, it was never abandoned properly. When they were ready to go into the courtroom, the lawyer advised the town, you're gonna lose this. Make an agreement with the people. The people made the agreement for gravel base vegetation and blowing. These handful. There weren't all the houses in our, no, right on Ellis Road, including mine. Then Jack Howley becomes, because now they maintain the gravel base, but the expense to the town being a gravel base road because of the washouts, it would clear the road completely out at, at some points. It was costing the town more money, so Howley researched the registry and deeds, went all the way back to the county commissioners, with Florence Chandler, who was the attorney at the time, town attorney. And they found out that they never went to the county commissioners to, to abort the, the road. They, they wanted to abort the road, but never completed the process. So DPW mem, uh, Director Stein at the time turned around and said, look, this is how much money we're spending on a gravel base. It's costing us a ton of money. And then they found out that, you gotta understand something, all these houses were built on a town-accepted with frontage, because you can't get a building permit without it. So once that went through, all this development happened, because it was an understanding that, yeah, that agreement was there in the beginning, but after further research, it was never abandoned. So it is still a town road, so all the guys, people that went up there, you build a house, you go to the department, you have to have frontage on a town-accepted road. All these houses were considered town-accepted road. They got their building permits and they built their houses. Stein plug mixed the whole road and put the drainage in. And that was the way it was. Now we came up for the, Heather's plan was, I don't know, it was a million dollars or whatever it was to find a number, but it was just a grinding pave from Tory Road to the Charlton, uh, border. Or both sides were gonna get ground and paved, and she said right in the meeting, there's not gonna be any big work to the road as far as drainage and stuff like that. The bid goes out, Pioppi gets the job, he goes up there, and Jimmy Pioppi is the kinda guy that doesn't wanna do it shoddy workmanship, he goes, there's a lot more work there. The transition between the two Ellis Roads are like a, a big dip down, and it's, it's a mess. At that point, Pioppi comes back to DPW and some comedian brings it up and talks that, you know, there's need some engineering, there needs some other trees taken out. Then they said, well, we can't do it this year, we'll do it in the spring. Then all of a sudden, now it's not a town-accepted road yet. I've lived this road and, and these decisions that constantly gravel base. Where they go to, this is unbelievable, the recommendation go back to a gravel base, so we can lose more money with the washouts. And the reason why they plug mixed it and put the drainage was because of the washouts. So I don't think, the one thing about experience, when you acknowledge that you've seen something go wrong, you don't go back and say the stupid mistake. You don't go back and make the same mistake. So from me to the council, that's the history of Ellis Road. I've seen managers come through, DPW directors, everybody looks at it differently. You wanna go back to the agreement from all the people on here are dead, that made that agreement on the road. All the new residents are paying the top taxes on their property are now sitting here saying, we have the worst road in town.
All right, hold on.
They have addition from every household there, came to the town, and it went nowhere.
I'm gonna let the town manager answer.
So the only reason I'm looking at is because I've had people tell me various versions of the story. So, but when I go to the file, and I have to go down, and I know they have a larger file down there at DPW, part of the files that I have down here don't have all that information. And the town clerk says it's, she maintains a list of accepted ways, and it's not on that portion.
What's not on it?
That, that portion of Ellis Road.
The board of selectmen voted to abort it. On further investigation by Jack Howley, they never aborted it. But the board of selectmen, the records will show, there was a vote of the board of selectmen that they aborted it. But in order to do the aborting of the road, you have to go to the county commissioners, the county engineers to abort the road. It never was aborted all the way through the process, so the town remained accepted. That's why they were allowed, if we have to go get a lawyer and freight it again, we'll win, he'll pave it. But what happened was it was fought, and that's why all the residents got the permits, because they had frontage on a town-accepted road. But every time it comes up, you can have a different manager go and say, this is what's at the clerk's office, it says gravel base, tree, yeah, the original one said that. And then there were fights after that, battles over the road, that these citizens up there got permits because they agreed it was town-accepted. DPW agreed at one point with the manager and paved it and put drainage on it. And they signed all the easements with the residents to run the water to the back of their properties on the lower end. So if it's not town-accepted, why did the town constantly do all this work? Because it depends on which manager it was, which DPW director. And here we are with a new DPW director and a new manager, and the discussion's gonna come on. It comes down to one thing. You have residents that built houses in good faith with the ideal that you get a building permit. You can't build a permit, you can't build a house on a private road. You gotta build it on a town-accepted road. The decision was it was town-accepted and they got their permits.
I don't really wanna, I don't think we should rehash the whole thing, again, the whole history of this road. We voted to fix it, and I think we should stick to that plan. I think the problem with Mr. Pioppi is he wants more money to do this job, so I think we're gonna have to either decide, we're going to give him more money to finish the job?
But he said he needs more engineering.
All right, fine.
And I would understand, I know, uh, the north side is very narrow. He was talking about widening the north side.
And he thinks he's gonna need more money.
In the transition on Gulfwood Road, there was a, if you drive it, you'll see it.
I've, I've driven it.
It's all right, um, Mr. Schneider.
Well, in line, over the course of many years, council wants the road fixed.
And we want the road fixed.
So it shouldn't be up to the town manager or to say, we're not gonna fix the road. Council has said, fix the road, and that's what it should be. I understand the legal parts of the things that the manager needs to look at.
He's gonna work through it.
But history-
He's gonna have to work through it, because that's, that's his job to work through things like that. All right, anybody else on this, on this question on this one? Mr. Dow?
Thank you. If that's the case, Mr. McColl, why from the beginning when Heather was on, uh, DPW director, you, it came forward with vote to be fixed?
I believed it was only the north side, and that's what her email said to me.
Was the whole road, we vote on it.
Said Ellis Road, but he was, he expressed to me, it was only the north side of Ellis Road. So when you were talking about Ellis Road, in my mind, you're talking about this? Yeah, it's just, but then I've had citizens ask me now, why are we paying the south side? Because there's some people that think we're spending money on a private road. So I just, we postponed it for the moment, so I said, I, my own curiosity and satisfaction, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly the process. We can't, uh, certify mail all the residents on Ellis Road. Uh, they like to, uh, you know, with, with the attachment, say, if you like, you know, give it to the town, or give, turn it to the town, whatever, sign it and send it back? And then that you get more residents agree, and then we don't have to go through that every year or every different town council or every town manager or whatever? Because it's, it's been for years, years, same, same headache, same word, same thing. And I think we approve it, and, and it was gonna have it done. And then when Heather left and Councilor Lawson have a little argument with, uh, Mr. DeJardine, did everything change now? If that's the case, that will be done already. Regardless of south or north, I don't know, but, you know, we already approve it, we already vote on it, and he was gonna move forward to when, so rather than, I don't know.
All right.
Problem is I'm in the middle, and I get questions from both sides and people in this town, and I don't know the answer, so I'm working-
I respect you a hundred percent, I know, but we already vote on it, we approve it. So I think it should be the blame on the town council, who already approve it. It's already, it's already went to bid, the guy bid on it, and I mean, if he, if he's trying to pull, I don't know, more money, or he wanna walk out, he's afraid now, no DPW to give him more, whatever, let him sign a paper, say, I don't want the job, and we'll put it in a rebid again. I mean-
I'm gonna go with Councilor Adams first.
What was the motion that we approved? For Ellis Road, right? It didn't say north side, south side.
It said Ellis Road.
And I understand the town manager's in a sticky situation, trying to figure, make sure everything's legal, because it's a liability, I got it. But we, I will say this, I believe the council was under the impression that it was Ellis Road, not north side, not south side. So if we have to change that motion, which I, I don't wanna do, I want the road done, um, that we just gotta do it right.
Well, and all I wanna clarify, just so we're all on the same page, is if that vote was sufficient to say that regardless of what we thought the status was, the intention was to pave it, then it's fine, because there are, I don't want what I don't want, and this is, has nothing about the history. I don't want somebody to say, well, we're, we're using public monies to pay private roads. But if it's all, and I don't know the history, I'm, I just wanna feel comfortable, council, I would, because I don't want somebody coming out of the way.
I get it, but Heather said-
Hold on.
That's all.
No, I'm fine, all right.
But Heather said, I said, okay, Heather, we're doing Ellis Road, yes. And she's talking about Ellis South, okay, with me? And she's talking about the intervals of the drainage and the easements going to the lower end, which I was familiar with. When they started this project, they labeled the trees that have to come down from the Tory Road. You can walk there right now. Heather was involved in labeling the trees to notify that these trees are coming down. And they start on Ellis Road by Tory- And they start on Ellis Road by Torrey all the way to Chaline. So when Pioppi bids it, Pioppi bids from Torrey Road all the way up. Now, the number came out a million dollars or whatever, a little under a million dollars.
Nine hundred thousand.
So now when Pioppi goes there, he's still talking, now you gotta understand, he walked through the project with, with Heather. You have to have a site walkthrough. Everything was understood at the time to go from there to there. And, and the thing is, the problem is, I live on that street. If I didn't live there, they probably already have to pay.
No, we don't.
Oh, no, the last time, every resident signed a petition. And they signed a petition that they wanted the road paved. A counselor and his cronies, because I had the small frontage, I had the big back lane, small frontage. He says it's not fair to the other residents, Lazo was going, it was all about me being on that road. So here I am again, I never took a fight for it because I live on the side that I don't have problems. It's the other residents on the backside.
Well, like I said, I don't really want to rehash the whole history of it.
Shouldn't have to.
As Counselor Dow says, we voted to fix the road, let's fix the road, so Counselor Dow.
Thank you. These houses that pay tax or not?
As far as I know, so.
So why, why we cannot say these residents pay house, they deserve.
Because you know why, we don't have a D P W director, right? And so this falls my way and the questions came to me and everybody wanted me to have an answer and I didn't have an interim. So I'm doing my homework, because none of this was brought up, I wasn't part of those conversations, I wasn't part of any of that. You know, I'm at a high level and things get resolved down here, now it falls on my plate and I want to make sure I know what's going on.
Okay. But Mr. McCall, this is nothing new. You was there when Heather bring it in and you was there when we voted.
I'll find you the email that says north side.
Now, I, I don't see the email, but when I vote on it, I'm talking about myself, I vote about Ellis Road. Didn't say at the meeting if it's south or north, it wasn't specific saying here.
I know.
What side, so we vote on it, your responsibility to check it, but it's still a fall on the town council responsibility. Some residents came, why are you using uh citizen money on a private road, but these people live there, they pay tax like everybody else. Why not, why their tax doesn't fix their own road, it's not fair.
We have other unaccepted roads in this town that have houses on them that pay taxes.
We do.
We have a lot and they ask for road repairs and we tell them no, that you can only expend up to five hundred dollars if the council votes on it, knowing that, that's all.
That's our reference to.
There's a lot of them.
There's a lot of them.
A lot of them.
But the difference with those is, is that these people have been going back for years under the impression that they were told it was an accepted street when citizens, when a selectman first started the decommissioning of the road process and never followed through with it. Because back in them days, county commissioners had to approve abandoning any roads. You'll look up on Pumpkin Hill Lane, up on Dresser Hill Road, town didn't want to do nothing there for years, but found out it was a road that they thought they abandoned and they'd never abandoned it back in the day. So the citizens think that they have an accepted road, they got a permit under the impression that it was an accepted road, that this town issued a permit for and then over the course of the years, it's went from this yes to this no, yes, no, yes, no. And it gives the, the assumption or the, the, and at some people, and I'll use it to me, that it's targeting him because of things that happened. Now, I'm not saying that this manager does those kind of things and he's in a pickle, not in a pickle, but he's in a position. But council asked, the council voted and it was Ellis Road to be done completely. Heather changed it or had some in her decision, decided it was only one side of the road. When council voted, the whole side of the road got made.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it, if you would raise your hand, if you want to speak, I will let you speak.
I just, you know, it's an old issue that's been kicked and kicked and it's all in the eye of the beholder. Well, who is in power? T M wants to cover his backside because somebody said something to him. He works for the council, the council directed through the government of D P W to do Ellis Road from one end to the other. So if that's what the intent was of the council, I don't understand how he puts it in reverse. How does he put it in reverse when you're the boss? It's just got to stop.
Counselor Lazo.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, we're not going to get into a personality thing, I don't. I think the town manager's trying to cover his back.
They never are that serious.
He's just looking into it, that's all. We're gonna get it done, we'll get it done. All right, Mr. Tom Manager, I love you have the final word if you want it, otherwise, anybody have anything?
For our next meeting, can I have a con, the copy of Jimmy Pioppi's contract for that reference?
Uh, Mr. Tom Manager, can you get us a copy of the contract with Mr. Pioppi?
Yeah, I, I did, um, I'm sure we can get.
All right, if nothing else, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
All those in favor? All right, thanks, guys.